In as we go, but I think we're ready to go. Cool. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alpi Mainville. I'm the athlete development director for the OVA. And it's a pleasure for me to welcome you to my basement office. For this little information session about our athlete development programs for 2021. With me tonight to help with with the session. I have with me Lauren Brenner. She's our athlete development lead. Say hello, Lauren. Angie Shen is our senior beach development coach. Hi, Angie. And well, now we have Joanne. Joanne is our executive director and she's here. Hi, Joanne. We found ourselves again together. We had a we had a long presentation today. For some funding with our. For the Opsi program. It's a long story, but we spent a lot of time together today on Zoom and we're actually happy to be back. Tonight with you guys to talk a little bit about 2021 and what will you know what the OVA will be doing for athlete development. This year. So I will get this started with with my PowerPoint. We'll start that. While I do that, I just want to. Let you know that tonight's session is recorded. We're going to go through the presentation and then we'll take questions at the end. You can either ask them in the chat as we go. Lauren and Angie may be able to answer some of those as we go. Or if if they think that some questions should be answered. You know, with everybody, we'll answer them at the end. And. Right here. Yeah. And so we'll answer them at the end. And if at the end you want to ask a question, you wanna you wanna just kind of talk to us, you'll be able to raise your hand. And and ask a question that way. All right? I assume that most of you are familiar with Zoom now, so I think we'll we'll leave it to that. So we're talking about athlete development programs tonight. We wanted to provide everybody with an update. Of kind of where things are at. I mean, in a regular year, at this point in time, there would be a lot of information already out there. Many of you, if not all of you, would already have a child registered in the athlete identification process. And we would already have all of the details for our summer programs essentially to communicate. Now, this is not a regular year as we are all aware. So it's a little bit different, but we still wanted to connect with you to kind of update you on the process, give you a little idea of what's coming. We've already received many emails from parents asking about what the summer will look like. So we wanted to to share that with you tonight and. And provide you with an opportunity to ask some questions and also provide feedback. Because as you'll see, the information that we have tonight. We don't have as much detail as maybe some of you would like. But I hope you understand the situation that that we're in. And the fact that at this point in time, there are still some decisions that are really hard to make. So actually, hearing what your questions are and hearing the feedback that you have. At the end of this presentation will really help. Us with. With making sure that we that we address. Perhaps like the concerns you have and that and that we plan our programs in a way where. Where we can give you all these details in in a short time. So let's get going with tonight's presentation. Oops, that's not working. This is working. So I wanted to kind of remind everybody of. Our our mission for our team Ontario programs and our athlete development program. And and that is to produce athletes and coaches who will represent in Canada internationally and reach the Olympic podium. Now. We've recently added a line to this mission that says, let's do all of that while creating a system of best practices for the entire OVA community. And this is a really important piece to us, and this may not have been obvious in the past. But it's definitely something that that we want to do now and that we want to do moving forward. Is connecting with the community, with clubs, with coaches, with athletes. Who are not traditionally our HP athletes and making sure that we have a positive. Impact on the entire OVA community and not just on, you know, the top few athletes. Who actually end up performing at a level that allows them to play on a top Team Ontario team. And go and represent Ontario in in competitions nationally or internationally. And and then you'll see, you know, why, you know, I mentioned this and why it's important. When I tell you a little bit about what we have in mind for the upcoming months. So. We really had to to do some work in redefining kind of our priorities for 2021 as as we. Just don't know how the situation out there with the pandemic is going to evolve. What will be possible for us to do, what will not be possible? We also had to consider the situation right now that athletes are in, you know. The fact that, you know, most of the provinces are still in lockdown right now. And, you know, we don't have athletes training. Some athletes have been off for two or three months. Some athletes just can't train and they don't have access to training where they are. So we engaged in some really good conversations with our high performance committee. And also our Team Ontario coaches. In order to kind of find what what the best approach for this coming year was going to be. And we landed on a few a few priorities that I want to share with you today. One of them is. We want to be there to support the athletes and the coaches. With accessible programs. And what that means is that we want to make sure that we can actually. Be there for as many athletes as possible who want to engage with the content and the programs that that we have to offer. Just just again, repeating, you know, the fact that we know about the situation of a lot of athletes out there not being able to train. Well, because everybody has a different situation, some actually are able to train. Like, we want to be make sure that we have a way to support kind of as many athletes as possible, no matter what their context right now is. We want to make sure that we provide an opportunity for athletes to connect with the Team Ontario pathway. So some athletes would have entered a Team Ontario pathway for the first time this past year. But they haven't. And they were probably not identified. And so, you know, perhaps they kind of like wanted a radar and none of our coaches know about them. And, you know, they're not on any of our athlete lists. And so we want to make sure that athletes have a chance to connect with Timo if they. Want to, if they think that this is something they need to do in order to achieve their high performance goals in the future. We want to see if we can do some identification. One of the issues that we considered when looking at their at our programs for the summer. Is that for some athletes, okay, so the last time that we had tried outs. Was in the spring of 2019. Alright, so let's just take the 14 years in 2019. So athletes who were 14 in 2019 tried out for the regional program. Some of them were selected and participated in the TORP program. And now, if we don't do anything this year and don't find a way to get to know the athletes. And, you know, try to get them on court somehow. And we only run some sort of identification in 2022. That means that in 2022, the athletes that we have trying out for our Team Ontario Black program, which is the highest level of our Team Ontario pathway essentially. The like we the last time we would have had them in the gym was at their 14 year tryout. And that's a huge gap. And so we want to try to kind of bridge that gap by doing what we can to get the athletes on court, whether that's. On sand or indoor, if we can, in some way where we can provide them with some feedback. Right to keep them connected with the pathway, but also for us to identify, get some data on their, you know, their their physical skills, their actual technical skills. Not so much for, you know, current targeted training opportunities, but for future targeted training opportunities. And the last thing is, well, let's look at, you know, how we can provide some targeted training opportunities. To some athletes as they become possible, as we find out, you know, about those possibilities. Starting with the top of the pathway, meaning starting with our full-time training groups on the beach and our Team Ontario Elite. Slash Canada Games groups with with indoor. Alright. So those were kind of the the guide, the guiding principles that. That we considered when 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 planning for the summer. So how does that translate into? Into programs? Well, the first thing that that we're going to to launch and that we're working on right now. We've named it the Athlete Insights Program by Team Ontario. And so this is a program we're working on that will be an athlete-led program based on the Volleyball Canada Athlete Development Framework. Now, that's a big word, but it essentially, if I just go here. And show you this. This is the Volleyball Canada Athlete Development Framework. So it essentially lists the skills that athletes should develop. In all four pillars of technical, tactical, physical, psychological, and life skills. And so we're, you know, this program that we're working on is going to be based on this, helping athletes. Understand these four pillars. And helping them get to know themselves and know where their own gaps are. In each of these pillars so that they have a better idea of who they are as an athlete. And how or where they can put their focus in order to pursue their development as a as an athlete. And so this program, the intention behind it is to be available for all athletes. So this is not meant to be a Team Ontario only program. That's why we call it the. Athlete Insight Program by Team Ontario and not the Team Ontario Athlete Insight Program. It's a big subtle nuance, I guess, but that's an important one. We really want to help creating a sense of community among the athletes from across the province with this. And and support the clubs. So one thing that we'll be communicating with clubs as we kind of finish developing this program. Is going to be. Connecting with them to share some information and some resources to help clubs and coaches. Connect with the athletes who participate in this program. So they can take take it further, perhaps engage in some further sessions to explore a little bit more of what the athletes have learned through this program. And 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 we think that it's also going to be a great resources for coaches who, you know, who have a lot to. To develop as well in terms of the athlete development development framework and where their strengths and weaknesses are in in teaching the athletes in all of those four pillars. So we're looking for this to be something that connects us all. And that will be available to all of the athletes. From like 14 new to 18 new. And this program, although. It's not just for Team Ontario, it's going to be. A first step for participation in further program in the summer. So in the past, athletes would have had to kind of register for an athlete identification process. This year, we're looking at kind of having the athletes go through this program. In order to access for their Team Ontario programs, but it's going to be a standalone program. So for athletes who just want to take it. So to get to know themselves better and they want to connect with other athletes from across the province who are also self-driven. They'll be able to do this and there'll be a lot for them to to gain through participating in the in this. So this is. This is the first thing, one of the first programs. Another one that we're working on for for the. Short term is a program we call the Tomorrow's Coaches Program. And and this one is is really interesting and we've had a lot of fun working on it. The objective of this program will be to introduce. Current athletes to leadership and coaching concepts. In order to help inspire them to want to become coaches in the future. So when we talk to clubs, we hear that, you know, they're constantly looking for for new coaches. We know that. One thing that really helps is when, you know, former athletes come back to the club and then offer their help. And volunteer to to be coaches. And some actually, some athletes who are currently, you know, they will they will be playing 17, 18 new and they'll still at the same time help coach a younger team in the club. And this really helps our clubs. And and learning how to coach can also be a really good way for an athlete to. Develop further as an athlete themselves. It's it's one thing, once you start having to coach something. You usually become a lot more mindful about how you do that one thing, right? So coaching volleyball can really help athletes get better as athletes. So we're really exciting excited about this program and it will be. It's not going to be about the X's and O's and, you know. Learning how to plan a drill and all these things. That's something that the ANCCP, the National National Coaching Certification Program does pretty well. This program is really going to be about igniting a passion for leadership and coaching in our youth athletes. So it will be a very interesting. We're going to bring some former athletes who are currently coaching, went through that transition so they can share some stories. And it will be super engaging and and done through activities. And and some kind of group work. So it's 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 really promising and and we're pretty excited to launch that one. And and we'll connect that with the clubs as well. So we'll be essentially connecting with the clubs and helping connect the clubs with the athletes from their clubs who. Are participating in this so they can actually, you know, take what we've done. And then go further as to perhaps offer some on-court. Coaching opportunities within their club or at least talk about what what's the pathway for these athletes in their club to become coaches. You know, what's the next step for them if they actually want to get in the gym and help some some young athletes? So that will be coming your way very soon as well. Now, looking at the summer. So what we're looking to do for the summer. Is really focus on Team Ontario, the Team Ontario Academy, which is something that we started last year where athletes were able to sign up. And obviously, last year was all virtual. But they were able to sign up and go through a bunch of different sessions with some of our Timo coaches. And. Yeah, and and learn about themselves and and learn to be. Train some stuff to become better better players. So. The idea is to run the same program. For athletes essentially of all ages. In a combined virtual and in-person program. So. Right now, where we're where we're wanting to do, and obviously, everything is going to depend on how things evolve from now on. But the idea is to. Run some sessions online as a continuation of the Athletes Insights Program. So because the Athlete Insights Program is going to be self-driven. This Team Ontario Academy will be an opportunity to connect with coaches and have some led sessions by coaches and further. The understanding of some volleyball concepts in all four pillars of the Athlete Development Framework. And then the idea is to provide each athlete who will sign up for the coach, the Team Ontario Academy with an opportunity. To get on court, whether indoor, oops, I don't know. Indoor or. Or on the beach. Now, keeping in mind that all of these opportunities will be will be regional. And regionally based that we know. Because that if we if we can't get on court, we know that we will want to have a lot of mitigation strategies. One of them being that will keep people in their area as much as possible. Now, one way to see those in-person sessions this summer. Is not necessarily in a way in a traditional Team Ontario way. So and I don't and I just want to explain this. So. I want to make sure that the expectations are clear. There will be very few opportunities for targeted athlete training. We don't really see yourself being able to identify a large number of athletes like we've done in the past. Normally, in order to run Team Ontario. Team Ontario Black, Team Ontario Red, Team Ontario White and our beach programs, we have to identify about 1,100 athletes. And we just don't really see a way that we'll be able to do that. In 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 an effective way this year. And we don't necessarily see this as a. As as a process that would be meaningful in a sense that so many athletes will not have trained that much by then. And what we really want to do, like I said at the beginning, our priority is identification. So one way you can see this is these are these in-person sessions will actually. Going to be a way for the athletes to get in front of Team Ontario coaches. We will provide every athlete who comes to. One of those sessions with some sort of feedback. So the form that this is going to take will will let you know at a later time. But we'll want the athletes to come there to leave with with something, right? And so that we can also leave with something, knowing a little bit more about them so that when they come back in 2022 and we run a nor normal, regular Team Ontario season. We have some sort of reference, right, to compare them to. And and we know, oh, yeah, no, I remember this athlete. Oh, yeah, no, that was that athlete had a really good progression and so on. So we can see it as as an opportunity for identification. In instead of an opportunity for, you know, really truly high-level training. Now, this identification where we're hoping to do, again, hoping the best, hoping for the best in this in the fall. For indoor athletes. Is that these identification opportunities on court will help us identify a group of 16 and 17-year athletes, both boys and girls. Who will be offered a targeted. Training opportunity in the fall. So normally, we run our Team Ontario Elite Program in the fall with our 18 new athletes. And they come to a couple of weekend camps throughout the fall and winter. Based on the schedule of our competition, so there's no conflicts. So what we're looking to do is essentially that, but with the 17s and 16s, which are normally not. Targeted by these that these types of training in the fall. But identifying some athletes so that it can come to some sort of high-performance targeted training in the fall. So that's the intention right now in order to for us to kind of fulfill a mission. Reach the entire OVA community, try to provide as many opportunities as possible, but at the same time kind of moving towards. What we do, which is, you know, that targeted training. Now. That being said, the last priority that we talked about earlier was to run some targeted athlete training. So right now, we're looking at doing that with our top groups. We're hoping for indoor that we'll be able to set up some sort of bubble. Training indoors is going to pose obviously more issues in training outdoors and that's what we anticipate. So we're looking into options on how to do that. We know that it's been done already in volleyball. Whether the national team has experienced with training some some groups of athletes. So we'll be working with them to to learn what what they've learned. So we can do this safely. And we'll be working as well with other of our partners such as the Canadian Sport Institute of Ontario. To really find the best, you know, the best practices in in doing something like this so that. That we can have it all figured out and it can work well. And for the beach, we are anticipating we'll be able to run our regular full-time training group. Because of the outdoor components of beach. So we were able to run our full-time training group last summer towards the end. Once stuff started to open up again. And we're hopeful that we'll have this kind of opportunity earlier in the summer this year. And so as soon as that's it's the case, we'll be launching these these training opportunities now. This is going to be happening in Toronto where the 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 program is based. But like I said, athletes from outside of Toronto will have these regionally based opportunities to connect with the program and and get some training there. So so that's what we're looking for to do. Not a lot of details, just because again. We're still in lockdown. We don't have any more information than you do about what's going to happen next. And I want to make that clear because sometimes. We we kind of hear, we have questions and we hear things that almost make it sound like, you know, oh, we're getting some insight scoops from the ministry or something like that. We don't. We don't know any anything more than you do. We we read the news and we share the news as soon as they they come up. We get the information at the same time as you get it. And so we're looking at everything that's happening, how things are evolving. And one of the things we'll be doing in the next month or so, actually a couple of months, is we're going to be. Making some decisions, starting to provide some more details. We are going to look at what the selection process is going to look like for these two programs. So that sometimes at the end of March or early April, we have the full details of how that's going to that's going to work. Obviously, we'll be adapting. To whatever that that we face and it comes our way like we've been doing pretty successfully, in my opinion, since this all started. And we will be keeping you posted at the same time. So really, the next steps here are for you to stay tuned for our next town hall sessions. We will have a town hall session on pretty much all of the programs mentioned during this webinar. So our Athletes Insights Program, our coaching program for youth athletes. And also the Team Ontario Academy and the targeted athlete training. Such as Team Ontario Elite and also a full-time training group. Alright, now, the one thing that I would really like to hear now and that actually Angie and Lauren and I were talking about this afternoon is. We're looking forward to hear your questions and your feedback. Because we want to be able to provide you with that information as soon as possible, you know? So I'd like to open it up now for, you know, everyone to either ask through the chat or even raise your hand. If you do that, you'll kind of pop up at the top of our participants list and then we can actually unmute you. And let you ask your question live. But but please, you'll be helping us by asking us those questions. You know, we usually at this time of year, we're in the gym, we're doing our athlete identification process, we're meeting. A bunch of athletes, coaches and parents, we're having conversations. We get a feel for what the questions are and, you know, the feel for kind of how the community is doing. Now, we're not really connecting. We're connecting tonight. So we're hoping that tonight is that time where we get to to get some of that, some of that feel for. How you guys are doing and what are the questions that you have at this point? Lauren? What do we have? Do you want to lead that section, that portion?
Yeah, for sure. So this question's from Tony. For the athletes that made it past the first tryout for the regional program, then COVID happened, how do we get those athletes identified for future possible Timo participation?
Yeah, well, so these athletes. The the best way for these athletes to be identified for future Timo opportunities will be to take part in. First, the Athlete Insights Program, then register for the Team Ontario Academy this summer. And then just attend their regionally-based training session, whether that's on the beach or indoor or both. Actually, at that age, it would probably suggest that you both and to discover a little bit of both the disciplines. And then and then from there, our intention is to be gathering data on on players and doing some identification there. So. I I'm thinking that if they if they were identified last year at the regional tryout camp. And they show up this year at this up training opportunity, they will likely stand out in their age group and then. And and then we get to know them a bit more. So when they come back for the next targeted training opportunity in 2022. They're not complete strangers to us and and we actually have some. You know, prior kind of baseline to to compare so that we can see, you know, their growth as a as a player.
Awesome. There's some questions here about the targeted training in the fall LP. So one of the questions is, is the target training or elite group for 16 new? Is that actually for the current 15 new athletes of this year? Or will they be 16 new next year? If that makes.
Yeah, that makes that makes a lot of sense. It's a great question. So it's for the current 15. Yes, so it's going to be 16 and 17 next year. So normally what happens is we have our Team Ontario Black program in the summer. And that is usually with athletes who are just finishing their 17 new year. So they go through the summer between grade 11 and grade 12, they go through Team Ontario Black. And then some of them are identified to stay on Team Ontario Elite in the fall of their grade 12 year. And that's where they come and they participate in a few program, a few camps. And on a good year, we take them to Europe on an international training camp during March break in 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 the spring. Now, obviously, that's off the table, but it's going to be that same process. So the athletes who are currently 15 new. So uh the athletes who are currently fifteen U, you know, are gonna be sixteen U next year. So that would be those athletes, so I guess current fifteens and sixteens. Uh, and then so for the current seventeens, if there is anybody on the call, um I guess like I could have mentioned that there will also be something, but that will be tied to the Canada Games. And so that's probably close, more closely tied to the targeted training that we're gonna have this um this summer. And the information for those athletes and how to access this training and these opportunities is gonna come out when we um when we release the selection process for the Canada Games indoor targeted training.
Perfect, okay. Uh, will targeted athletes be required to be vaccinated?
That's um, that's a good question. That's something that we need to figure out. At the moment, the information that I have is that um, you know, teenagers are not being vaccinated. I'm not aware of testing that's been done on teenagers with vaccines, but as the information, you know, becomes available and as obviously vaccine, um vaccines are, you know, become more of a thing, when 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 they um when we are able to to vaccinate more people, I guess uh we'll have to look at what that means. But um I can't really answer this question with a definite yes to no at this uh this time.
Is there any possibility of the Tall Maples program running, or will that be pushed to next summer?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, we didn't talk about it during this presentation, but it's very um, I I I can see us do something for Tall Maples because of the uh ease of identifying these athletes. We normally, normally our ID process for this group is, how tall are you and how high do you jump? And we rank everybody from tallest to shortest, and there you go, we make the selection. So um this, so this would be an easy thing to do. But I don't wanna say easy, but it would be a bit more simple in terms of identification, so I can see us do something like that. It will really depend on our resources and uh availability of coaches and of training um uh training space and and if we're able to actually bring athletes together. Like, we we feel confident that we can uh we can create a bubble for our um top um Team Ontario Elite, boys and girls on on the indoor side. Um, but we also are mindful or conscious that it's gonna be a lot of work and there's gonna be a lot put into this. And 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 we're really gonna prioritize doing this really well and keeping everyone safe as opposed to trying to do, can create these types of bubbles for multiple groups. Um, because it's not a, it's not a place where we wanna stretch ourselves too thin and then and then mess things up, you know? Uh, so 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 we'll see, but we'll we'll keep uh everybody posted on that.
Um, so the kids who are currently in seventeen U that are not in the Canada Summer Games targeted athletes, um, how does this program benefit them? Will they have access to training in the fall, et cetera?
Yeah, so for those um, for those athletes who are like the two thousand and threes and two thousand and four athletes, so our eight eighteen and seventeen years. Um, those are typically the a- athletes that would participate in the Canada Games. The Canada Games are supposed to run this summer, they were postponed to next year. And this is a competition that was supposed to include athletes born in two thousand and three and later. The decision was made to keep, and that's for indoor, by the way. Um, so beach athletes are a little bit older, so um but the ages for both beach and indoor uh were kept the same, so the birth years. So that means that the kind of games in twenty twenty two are going to be for the same two thousand and threes and two thousand and four. So those are the current eighteen seventeen U. Next year, there will be first year university and eighteen U athletes. So we know from past uh Canada Games years that most of the teams are going to be made out of, you know, the the first year, I guess, so the two two thousand and threes. But there will be some two thousand and fours, who are our current seventeen U's. So we will definitely be uh considering these athletes when um when preparing the selection process for this, for the, for this summer and that bubble training group that we're gonna, that we're gonna put together. Um, so again, um stay tuned, but there will definitely be uh consideration for these athletes in a way for them to um raise your hand, say, hey, I'm interested and I think I can make this, and and for them to to um um show us that they can, you know, and and prove themselves. Not sure what it's gonna look like, whether that's in person or some sort of like virtual tryout uh like Volleyball Canada, I think, as announced today, um that they were doing for their National Excellence Program, but we'll uh we'll keep you guys posted.
Is completing the online TMO Academy a prerequisite for uh in-person TMO opportunities?
Yeah, so the Athlete Insights Program is going to be um a way for athletes to get to know themselves better. And this is something that we definitely want athletes to do, we want them to really know themselves well. And so we'll encourage all athletes to do uh this program before they participate in anything this summer.
Do you think there will be position-specific training options this summer?
It's possible. Um, we don't wanna commit to that at this point just because of the logistics of running regional, regionally-based training with all age groups. And the number of coaches, the number of uh mentor coaches that this requires, uh the number of gyms that we need to have access to. Uh, so and then also the potential restrictions of, you know, can we have coaches work with different groups or not, right? Like, those are all things that we need to figure out. And position-specific training would take us in a territory where, like, we would need to have access to quite a few gyms and we would need to have coaches being able to work with different groups um and available in all, you know, the different regions, so. If we find out that we can do that, then we will, but it's not the first priority.
Uh, this next question's more for beach. Angie, I don't know if you wanna answer this or not, but um do you have some more information regarding the regional training in terms of coaches? And then if athletes decided to travel to Toronto to train with the FTG group, uh is that possible, do you think?
Um, so as far as the regional training, we'll definitely have Team Ontario coaches that are in the region supporting um the coaches in the community as well, um so we can actually begin to kind of grow that piece. I know that a lot of our program in the past has been centralized in Toronto and that's purely based on resources, so COVID's actually been really good about, you know, kind of expediting this process that we want to do to bring it more regional. Um, as far as coming to Toronto, that will be based on the what opportunities we have to identify. Um, so, yeah, that that's been, that's been one that I've, you know, we've had on our mind quite a bit. Because for any new athletes, we need to figure out a way to ID. Um, so typically, yes, absolutely. Um, right now, it's just looking at how we're gonna do that.
Yeah, and I would add to that again, like, uh, we've seen this um recently with, um, you know, at the end of the beginning of the winter, uh when some uh regions started going to the red zones and uh we were running some friendlies and uh athletes and teams from those red zones were not allowed to to come to other zones. Uh, now, I don't know how out regions outside of Toronto are like more red than Toronto is, but you know, those are all considerations that we're gonna need to have as well.
Definitely. Uh, the this next question says, how do we sign up for the athlete ID process? But perhaps this means how do we sign up for the insights and then the in-person training?
Yeah, you'll be registering through MRS. Uh, of uh right now, we don't have these links um open or or running, but you can expect that sometime. Um, I would say if everything goes well with, you know, finishing to 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 put it together uh towards the end of February for the for the registration and perhaps to start uh early March. Uh, but stay tuned. So what we'll do is when we're ready for registrations, we'll have a full session on that where we actually walk athletes through how it's gonna work and and some of the modules and what they uh they can be excited about. Um, so so maybe a few more weeks and then you'll be able to sign up.
Uh, LP, there's a couple of questions here about the Ontario Summer Games. Uh, have they been moved to twenty twenty one, OVA participation, that sort of thing?
Yeah, the Ontario Summer Games have been moved to twenty twenty one. Um, we have not, um, uh, we haven't heard anything about a cancellation or not. We reached out to, sorry, they reached out to us uh before Christmas uh in the winter and we were in in no position to guarantee that we could participate. Um, so we're waiting to hear from them kind of what um mitigation strategies and everything, what we're like, what what are they gonna do to keep everyone safe before we commit to something like this? So um, so as of now, we're not participating in the OSG. Um, but this could change. Personally, I wouldn't bet on it, uh just the way things have been going. Uh, and and like just thinking about how big of an event this is, uh, yeah, so. I mean, we to be honest with you, we canceled our Ontario Championships and you know, I I don't see how like that and that event would be any different and it's not very much further down the calendar, so I don't know. But, you know, if if we're being told that this is gonna be safe and we think it's a responsible thing to do, we'll absolutely run it because we know the athletes would love it.
For sure. Uh, there's another question here about the Canada Games. Uh, is it possible to have a two thousand and three team and a two thousand and four team?
For like to go to the Canada Games?
Yes, I think like two different teams competing in the Canada Games.
Oh, yeah, no, so unfortunately, no, that's not um, it's not possible. The the way that multi-sports uh like the, like these work is the the Canada Games Council, they make the rules for how many uh essentially athletes and teams are gonna be allowed to be there. And so they work with Volleyball Canada and they only allow um a certain number of teams, so uh total. And obviously Volleyball Canada says, well, there's one per province and territory. And then we have limits of number of players we can bring and then limit of number of coaches because they're actually hosting everybody, so they need to manage that. Um, so we're only allowed one team, so typically what happens is we put that um, you know, the best possible team, looking at um, you know, selecting the athletes that are showing the biggest potential of reaching the the junior national team level on the indoor side and uh the international level on the beach side.
Um, I'm sorry, I just got another one from the Canada Summer Games question. So if after the Canada twenty twenty-two games, when will the next Canada Game cycle be? Do we know that information? Will it be twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six because of the change?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, I don't actually know the answer to this question, but my best educated guess would be that it will s- they will stick to twenty twenty-five. Just because that city has already been uh determined, I believe it's like in Newfoundland, I think. Uh, that's to check again, or somewhere out east. And um I think that's why we got them, because they were supposed, I think the anyways, to make a long story short, it's out east. And I'm pretty sure it's gonna be twenty twenty-five because that's what they would have committed to and already started to plan for.
Great, okay. Uh, next question here is, what is the Athlete Insights Program express expected to cost athletes?
So we're looking at uh making this uh program very affordable. We're looking at somewhere in around of uh thirty dollars to uh participate in a program. Um, so similar to what it would have been for the ID process in the past. Uh, just, you know, don't wanna make this um in a, you know, not accessible to uh to the majority of athletes. We really want this to be something that athletes participate in, uh learn how to self-evaluate and 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 take ownership in their own development. Uh, so, yeah, we'll uh we'll be looking at keeping it around that that mark.
Uh, for those selected for Team Ontario last year, will they go through the same selection process? Will this summer look different for them? Please explain.
So for the athletes who were selected to TMO Red and TMO Black Beach Indoor last year, uh, the, so I guess the only group for whom, for which there will be some sort of other selection process would be the athletes that were in TMO Black last year. Or the athletes that were in in the beach full-time training group. Where um, you know, there may be some opportunities there to uh to join the targeted athlete training, the in-person training. Now, like I said, we're gonna have to work on what that selection process looks like. And but for the athletes who were on TMO Red last year, um, for them, they will have to go through the Team Ontario Academy program and the in-person training opportunities to be identified to then be potentially invited for the targeted training, uh targeted athlete training in the fall.
Great, okay. Um, and then there's another question here, I can answer this one if you want.
Uh, go ahead.
How can we access uh the information for the regional training opportunities when they become available? Uh, once we have that information, we'll be posting that on our Team Ontario website. I'll put that in the chat just so everyone has that. I'm sure it'll be on most of our social media platforms as well. We have some more information and we'll be on a town hall again to discuss that, but all the new updates can be found there. Um, another question here, do you anticipate Horseshoe Valley hosting one of the regional beach opportunities?
Yeah, that's definitely an intention to do so. Um, I mean, final difference will always be around resources and maximizing the amount of athletes and coaches that we can support, um but the intention right now is for sure to do so, and we did so last year, so.
Great, okay. Um, I'm not seeing any other questions here. If anyone, if I'm missing any, please uh retype again or raise your hand.
I think I think uh Tony had a raised hand earlier, I don't know if Tony's question was answered. Oh, yeah. Can we unmute Tony?
Hi, thank you. Um, I just had another question. Um, you you mentioned about, you mentioned the regional beach indoor trading opportunities. Um, we're from Windsor. Um, my daughter plays for fifteen U, she's fourteen right now. Actually, I coached the team. Um, where, what regionally, where would these opportunities be and like who can we get in contact with regarding this?
I can answer for the beach. I mean, Windsor's pretty lucky to have Darren out there. Um, and he's very closely connected as one of our, he's our, actually our uh male Canada Games coach as well. Um, so I've been in conversation with him right now to sort out what that would look like um to, I mean, what he offers there, I think, is 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 really whole as it is. And just talking to him about how Team Ontario can support him further out there.
And what about you?
Yeah, so the, I mean, this is something that we need to figure out in terms of where that's going to be, but you're definitely gonna wanna, you know, touch base with Lauren uh as we, as we keep going down um that planning process. So Region Three is a very large region, so that's um the region basically going from Windsor all the way to Burlington, uh Oakville, actually. And uh the uh, so it's, yeah, very large region, we obviously a lot of athletes and coaches. So um we'll be looking to kind of split the training because within that same region, there could be a lot of traveling if you just stick to one facility. So we'll be bringing it down, and that's actually also going to help with making sure that we keep small groups of athletes as opposed to ending up, ending up with, you know, a hundred players uh in one spot. Um, so I would think that, I would think that the, you know, I expect at least London to be a a a place where where we have some training, so for you guys, it would be um an hour or so, perhaps?
Forty minutes, yeah, we've been.
Yes, okay, yeah. So, I mean, yeah, we'll 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 really do our best to um, you know, spread them around so so we can accommodate as many athletes as possible, like you know, we, we feel your pain, you know, like, uh, I mean, as a as a father, I have young, young children and I'm actually, you know, really grateful that they're still very young because they're kind of know, they don't really realize what's going on, but I can only imagine what it's like for you guys who have, uh, you know, teenagers and older, older kids. And uh and also just from a volleyball perspective as a coach, like, we all miss being in the gym and and And, uh, and also just from a volleyball perspective as a coach, like, we all miss being in the gym and, and. Can't even imagine how much the kids are missing it, so, um, it's not like, uh. It's something that goes beyond, you know, just, just work for us, it's, it's something that we're passionate about, you know, and, and we're really gonna do everything we can to, uh. To create those opportunities for the kids to, to be there, um.
I have a twelve, and I have a twelve-year-old as well that we, they still train.
Well, that's awesome.
Yeah, they still train, we've been fortunate to have those opportunities where they can still do that, and I do what I can with them, but. Yeah, we're, we're, we're all missing it. So, yeah, can't wait till it gets, it gets back to normal, whatever that is anyways.
Uh, I just have some more questions here for, for you guys. For current Timo, now U eighteen athletes, will there be training opportunities in the summer? Or does that program end, uh, this spring?
For the current eighteen U's? Yeah, so the current eighteen U's for indoor, uh, those are our targeted athletes for kinda games, so they would be. They would definitely be targeted for the training bubble that we're looking to create in the summer. Uh, so I anticipate that we would have. Probably. Depending, it's, I think it may be different on the boys and the girls side, but on the boy's side, probably more eighteen U's and seventeen U's, and on the girl's side. Uh, perhaps the opposite, depending on whatever the situation is with girls going to the States for post-secondary and stuff like that. Um, but this is definitely the age group that's targeted.
Uh, I have a question here about Timo Black, so this means, uh, in our current, uh, training plan. There is no Timo Black this summer, and then only targeted training is selected after the summer programs. Towards the elite in the fall.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so for the, so let's just recap that, make sure that's very clear for everybody. Starting with the eighteen U's, so the current eighteen U's will have a chance to, uh, try out or be selected for that. Training bubble in the summer, so that targeted athlete training for indoor. The current seventeen U athletes will also potentially have a chance to be part of that selection process. Now, these athletes, uh, those current seventeen U's will then, as part of this. Identification process will also have a chance to be selected to stick with this group throughout the Team Ontario Elite Training next year. Now for current sixteens and fifteen U's, as part of their. As part of their, um, uh, program this summer with the Team Ontario Academy, they're gonna be part of that. They're gonna do the combined virtual and in-person program. When they come to the in-person training opportunities that they are offered. Indoor, they will be identified there. And, um, some athletes will be invited to join a targeted training, a camp or two in, in the fall. Um, the details of what that looks like and how many athletes will be part of it, that will be released when we have a bit more information on. What everything's gonna look like, um, but that's essentially what, uh, what the process looks like for the different ages.
Uh, would participating in the beach full-time training group conflict with participating in the indoor on-court opportunities? For the purpose of being identified for the fall?
I can, I can start off. Can I answering that? Um, I would say that at this point, um, the intention is always to be as accommodating as we can to the athletes. Um, and reduce kind of the amount of conflicts, um, for the opportunities. I mean, in, in a non-COVID year, we would be kind of saying that as well, but I think that's even extra important right now. Um, while keeping, we need to come up with a solution that keeps the quality of the beach program high and the quality of the indoor program high as well. But, uh, that, uh, I, I can't see why we would keep saying no to anybody at this point when lockdown already says so.
Nothing to add, great answer, Angie.
Thanks.
Are we expecting a normal beach season this summer?
That's a joint question, she's like, me, me, me. Oh, Joanna, I'm gonna unmute you, wait, one second.
Now I think I'm unmuted, thank you.
Lauren did it before I could.
Uh, you guys are fast on the trigger. Um, there's actually a town hall scheduled for that, March first. So I think that would be a great opportunity to, um, see what's happening for, uh, the outdoor. But, um, they are looking to, um, prepare some more regionally-based competitions. And as we said, like, whatever can happen will happen, so that's what our team is working on. Um, and, but it will keep, um, athletes more in their regions, and if we can bring them together, um, to have a larger competition, we will. But we really don't know, so let's see what we have for March first, but I'll tell you, the team is diligently working on it, um, and behind the scenes. And they're also looking, um, to expand it to some grass if they can, just to help, because we do. Um, not have as many, uh, beach courts as we would like around the province, and without indoor happening this year, everyone's. Dying to play and whatever, um, the OVA competition staff can run, they wanna run, so. March first is the, uh, town hall for that one at seven thirty, so sign up and we'll give you more info.
Awesome, thanks, John. What will the training opportunities be like this summer in terms of times? Will they be on weekends or evenings for those athletes committed to work or academic programs in the summer?
Yeah, for sure, that's a great question. It's always, it's impossible to accommodate everybody and everyone, unfortunately. But what we're looking at right now is daytime, uh, weekday, uh, training opportunities for, for the athletes. It's, it's like, you know, we're looking at that and it may change based on availability of our, you know, of the gyms or anything. But right now, what we've been discussing is, um, you know, is, is kind of, is, is respecting, you know, everyone's family and their commitments. And, um, we, you know, we know there's a lot potentially going on on weekends, like, um, that kids have, so we wanna. You know. Try to do everything, you know, from Monday to Friday. Uh, and then, uh, because again, hoping that the athletes are participating in these, uh, in these training opportunities. Also, you know, wanna play beach and our beach events are in the weekend. Uh, and so it will be fun for them to go out to their regionally-based, whatever that looks like, kind of beach events. So, yeah, it'll be, it will, it will be, it will be then, and it's, it's the same with the FTG, all the full-time training group training. Uh, happens during the week as well, so that the athletes can join some, some tournaments. Sorry, I guess the only thing I would add is, um. We're most likely going to run the indoor portion of the programs. Uh, in July, uh, perhaps going into the first week of August or so. But it, it's likely going to be. In that area, rather than later in August.
Perfect, okay. Should indoor training not be a possibility this summer? Uh, will the targeted group of, uh, Canada Summer Games athletes be training outside?
If they want to, uh, I don't see, I don't see why not. The, um, one thing with. Um, with that group of athletes, i- is if we can't run the, the bubble and we see that it's not doable and we won't be able to do it safely. We'll figure something out. Um, this is a group of athletes that, um, you know, for the most part. You know, we know, because we've identified them before, they've been part of the program. Uh, and so we'll have some further conversations with, with the athletes at that level. And then they'll let you know, we know if you're interested in participating, and we'll see what, what happens, perhaps it looks like. Some day camps or some day training opportunities like we did in the fall with this Team Ontario Elite Group. Or, um, just like we will do for the Team Ontario Academy athletes, uh, but we'll definitely find a way to support, um, that age group.
Awesome, thanks, LP. Uh, another question here, how can local coaches become involved in the regional programs? And what would the time commitment kind of look like?
Amazing question, thanks so much. I actually had a note. But I did not open my book, so, uh, the, the, I mentioned it at the very beginning. I said we wanted to support athletes and coaches with accessible programs. And so far, we've just talked about the athletes, but we want these programs to be accessible to coaches as well. Developing coaches is a major part of our Team Ontario programs. We actually spent quite a bit of time on our presentation today to, uh, our, you know, CSIO and our funding partners. How we develop our coaches, and, um, one thing that's for sure. Uh, and that we've said already, uh, within us and when we talk to our HP committee and our, and our Timo coaches is. Like, we, we want to essentially welcome anyone who wants to be part of the, of the programs as a coach to be here. And, and, and how that's gonna work is that. We can accommodate a lot of coaches through our mentorship program with virtual, uh, training and, 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 and online. Programs, right? So what it would look like, so. Let's say a hundred club coaches are interested in participating in these opportunities in the summer. Because they haven't been coaching this year, they love coaching, they wanna get in the gym, they wanna help athletes, they wanna get involved, and they wanna work on themselves as coaches. Well, we're gonna put these hundred coaches through, um, our coach mentorship program, starting sometime in May or June. Uh, prepare them so that they understand really, uh, what, um, um, the athlete development framework is about, what they're gonna have to do. And then, um, have them go on court with some more experienced, uh, Team Ontario coaches in their region to support them. Uh, so it's not necessarily that anyone who signs up is gonna be leading a group and actually identifying and selecting athletes by themselves. Uh, but they'll be going through, through some training and we'll have a chance to be matched with, uh, some coaches, um, to support them and get. Get the experience and be out there. So. Hope that answers the question. So I guess where you find out more, well, it's gonna be through, um, the posts that we have, and we'll, we'll have a call for coaches. When that's ready and we have more, uh, details around the same time as we'll have, uh, more info for parents and athletes.
There's a question here about national team programs and possibility of OVA athletes. Uh, being potentially on those lists, do we have any information on those national team programs at this point?
Absolutely not. The, we have, also the information that we have. Okay, so last year was twenty twenty-one, so it was the qualification year. No, sorry, was twenty twenty, it was for indoor, uh, programs, twenty twenty was the qualification year for national team programs for world championships. Uh, I'll give you like a thirty-second course on national team programs. So FIVB has four youth athletes kind of categories for indoor. U twenty women, U eighteen women, U nine, U twenty-one men, and U nineteen men. So the U comes before the number. Okay, so it's not nineteen U, it's U nineteen, so it's actually eighteen U, okay, so just follow along. Uh, and so, last year, normally we would have had teams try to qualify for world championships. There was no qualification events, so this year. Um, what we've heard is that Canada has been granted a spot in world championships automatically, based on their world ranking. And U twenty-one men and U eighteen woman. So what that means is that, uh, if we were to actually. If Canada was to follow along and, and, and send a team to these competitions, they would send a team of. Uh, players who were born in two thousand and one, uh, men, so male athletes born in two thousand and one, uh, to this competition. And then female athletes born in two thousand and four to this competition. Uh, or later, I guess, so we're expecting to hear more from Volleyball Canada when, when they kind of figure out their, their stuff, but. Uh, those are the two national team opportunities that we've been told may, uh, may exist. So, so keep an eye open for that. The other thing from the women's side for those two thousand and four athletes. Uh, I think it, I, I saw an email pass, I didn't read it, but I think today, uh, I think they launched. The National Excellence Program Virtual Trial, uh, Program. I don't know if someone can confirm that, I could check, uh, but, um. The National Excellence Program is a program from the national team that they started this year, where they had the top sixteen girls in the country from. Uh, grade eleven and twelve, uh, attend four months of training in B C at the Women's National Team Training Center. From September to December, so we have girls in Ontario who just came back from this experience around the holidays. Uh, because they were in B C for four months training full-time. So they're looking at doing the exact same program this coming fall from September to December. And they're gonna do the selection process through a virtual selection or virtual trial. Thing where athletes create a profile and a, some of their videos and their physical testing data and all that stuff. Uh, so if you are, um, a parent of an athlete, or if you are an athlete, a female athlete. Born two thousand and four or two thousand and five, um, look it up. Um, there could be an opportunity for you to, uh, to participate in that, uh, selection process.
Uh, yes, oh, Joanne answered her hand up too, go ahead.
We have to unmute her every single time.
Sorry.
Sorry, um, just to clarify the ages of that, LP, I think they're extending it to younger. Cause they're saying the identification is for athletes that are currently in grade nine to eleven now. So that's gonna be younger than two thousand and.
Yeah, so they're add, yeah, they're adding a year.
They're adding a year, yeah.
Yeah, so two thousand.
It's all done virtually, so they can send it in, but basically, yeah, look, if any athletes interested in that, it'll be the selection process. Will all be done virtually, send in your videos and highlights to Donna. At the, for the, for the N A P. I just wanted to point out that it's younger. So, three nine.
Yeah, for sure, okay, thanks for that, yeah. Well, I guess, yeah, that makes sense.
Great. Um, I just posted the link there in the chat for anyone who wanted to know more on that process. And at this time, I don't see any other questions here, LP, that I didn't already cover.
I mean, if you have more questions, we're happy to answer them. Sorry for those who may have emailed us in the past, like. Two business days, uh, we're quite busy preparing for this big presentation we had today. Uh, I know personally, I will catch up on emails tomorrow. And, uh, but please send us, um, your questions if you have them. Uh, we'll be, we'll be happy to, uh, to answer them and, and to work with you. If you have great ideas, let us know. If you work for a company that offers cheap, uh, rapid tests, let us know, we're trying to create a bubble. But seriously, uh, any, any, any questions you have and, and feedback will, uh, will be glad to either answer or, or consider. Uh, in order to create some quality programming for both athletes and coaches this summer.
Um, LP, I just wanna add, add one thing.
For sure.
Um, just around the Athlete Insight Program, I think it's very easy these days to look at these programs and think that they're just a substitute, because we can't go out. But there was a strong intention for this to be meaningful. Um, one experience that, that we had on the beach, um, a little bit different from indoor, because indoor didn't get to go and like out training immediately after. Was that after our Timo online program, we saved a ton of time with kind of supporting athletes and the theories and the concepts around training. For the beach, and when we got on the court, language is all the same, we could get right into training. So that is one of the biggest intentions of the Athlete Insight Program, is to actually maximize our time when we get out on the court, and it's not just a. Thing to get people to do something online to, to, to check a box, so. Um, I just kind of wanted to add that, because we definitely saw a big difference on the beach, and it's probably something that's gonna continue, um, non-COVID. Um, uh, cause we saw the effectiveness of that, so.
Absolutely. Thanks for that, Angie. And thanks, uh, for being here, Angie, Lauren, um, Joanne, thanks for. For helping sharing that info with, uh, with people out there, and we obviously wish you a great rest of day and a good week, and, um. Yeah. All the best, stay safe. And happy. We'll talk soon, see you in the next webinar.